Good evening. This meeting is called to order. Today is November 14. The time is 6:04 PM. I'll be chairing the meeting today as Mayor Ty Pennsirga has a family emergency and will not be present. We're going to go ahead and move on to roll call. City Clerk.
Mayor Pennsirga is absent. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Hay?
Present.
Commissioner Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Vice Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. This evening's invocation will be led by Pastor Emily Ash from First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Amy Kelly. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge.
Loving God, we come before you tonight as people of this community seeking your will, seeking to know how we can best serve each other, how we can be neighbors to each other, and how we can rule in peace and serve in peace and provide the things that we need to have a sustainable blessed life in this town. We ask that you are with our leaders, that you are with our community people who have gathered here. All come with feelings, passionate concerns that are very important to them. Let them be heard. Let them feel that they have a voice. We ask that you cover this space with your spirit and we are kept safe and we are kept in a place where we can be transparent and open. We ask all this in your name and all said amen. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to move on to additions, deletions, and corrections. We're going to go ahead and start on the right-hand side with Commissioner Hay.
I want to, I guess I can do the pulls now. Pull 6D as in dog, 6D. And also, no real disclosures, but I did attend the Reggae Souls to the Poles and the Friday celebration, whatever we call it. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Turkin?
Yes, I'd like to move 10A up to after public audience. And then I'd also like to pull 7A when we get there. I attended the Veterans Home Build with Habitat. That was awesome. The Veterans Memorial Ceremony was great, too. Thank you for the city for setting those up. And then, of course, first Friday as usual and the Reggae Fest.
Commissioner Kelly?
The only thing I noticed on the agenda was that the Advisory Commission appointments were not on here. And I'm sure that's because there maybe isn't any applicants. But normally, we at least have it on the agenda so we can talk about what advisory boards we have, positions available. So I just wanted to make sure that didn't get dropped off and it gets put back on, please.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's it.
As for myself, I don't want to change anything in the agenda. I did want to say that, make an announcement. Wanted to make an announcement about the Holidays in Boynton Beach. We're going to have a tree lighting, a parade, concerts, movies, a boat parade, breakfast with Santa, photo contest, light displays at parks, kids camp, holiday markets, basketball tournament, senior party, toy drive, arts and crafts, duck party, and more. If you want to find out more, please go to holidaysinboynton.com. Now, we're going to move on to item 3A.
Do we need a motion to?
Oh, sorry.
For the addition?
Apologize.
Well, I have two items for corrections and additions. For correction, 12B, the project is for, and the resolution has been corrected. You have a hard copy on the dais. It should, it says Boynton Beach Boulevard Extension Project. It should be Boynton Beach Boulevard Complete Streets Project. So that will be reflected in the resolution you adopt. And I do need to add 12C because I need to make another request for another closed-door session of the JKM litigation. So if you could add that to the agenda and then it'd be appropriate to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we're going to move on with announcements. Wait, just one second. We're going to move on with announcements, community and special events and presentations, starting with A. City Manager Daniel Duggar is going to announce the reinstitution of the Police Athletic League program. City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll start with this credibility. You have to have it in order to command respect. And the person that I made a promise to the Coalition of Clergy, a lot of others, that I would do my best to try to reinstitute the Police Athletic League. I think when we dissolved the program more than a decade ago, it was a disservice to the community. And tonight, I have the privilege of being able to introduce the man that's going to bring the framework back with the Police Athletic League. He's probably touched more kids' lives than most of us here. He was a pillar in the community for more than three decades. Seen him on ESPN. You've seen him at the Boynton Beach High School helping coach those kids. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Reserve Officer now, Bill Tome.
Duggar, City Manager. My name is Bill Tome again. Yes, we're trying to be Reserve Officer. I got a couple more tests to go, you know? So I got to make sure I show up on time and stuff like that. But I'm happy that you guys entrust me to come back. With Joe Hayes, I've known you for a long time. It's great to see you, all the new members. Thank you for having me up here. And thank you for allowing me. So with me being entrusted by you guys and supported by you guys in the Boynton Beach Police Department, Giorgio Giulio, and those volunteers right there that started with me 30 years ago, we promised to give you a good program and make you guys look good and, most of all, to help these kids. The programs are still there that we started many years ago, basically running by the coaches that are left there in charge, and they're basically just getting by. So we want to enhance those programs and start some new programs. And so with that, again, I want to say thank you. And without those volunteers, even this big guy walking here, Dennis Rump, we've been around the world together with all these kids, really. We met from New York City, Cincinnati, Kentucky, New Jersey. And, you know, we're taking these kids, some of these kids have never been out of Boynton Beach, never mind jumping on a plane, going to New York City and hotels, motels, and everything else, and having a good time. And that's what we're getting back now. Some of these guys are police officers now. Only 1% make it to the NFL. We were lucky that we sent 22 kids from our youth football program to the NFL, which is unheard of. But what about the kids that go into the military, the corporate worlds, the Home Depots? And that's what we get back now. Because now they're having kids and now we're going to put them back in the program because they've always been talking about, oh, officer Bill did this and the Boynton Beach Department did this, and they don't believe them. Well, now we're going to bring it back. We're going to enhance the program. I want to thank Giorgio Giulio and Dan Duggar for putting this together. And Commissioner Hayes, thank you. And all the newcomers. And we look forward to having a good time. And if I can fit into my uniform for Reserve, we're working on that, Joe. And that's a whole nother story. But I look forward to hanging out with you guys. So thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say, Bill, it's good to see you. It's good to have you back. I've always been a supporter of the Police Athletic League. And every round goes higher and higher. I'm looking for better and greater things from you. And I'm going to be working with you along with Dennis Rump and the rest of the people that have helped you in the past. This is good news. This is really good for our community. It's good for our kids. And I just have nothing but smiles from one end to the other about this program. See you around, my friend.
Any other comments?
All right. We're going to move on to item 3C, 3B. Proclamation recognizing December 1st as World AIDS Day. Katoura Joseph from Faith Base CDC will accept this proclamation. I'm going to go ahead and read it for the record. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has changed our world immeasurably and COVID-19 lockdowns and other restrictions disrupted HIV testing and in many countries led to steep drops in diagnosis and referrals to HIV treatment. Worldwide, an estimated 37.7 million people are living with HIV and an estimated 1.5 million new infections occurred in 2020, which is an estimated 4,100 new infections every day. Whereas worldwide, 16% of people infected don't know their status and only 73% of persons with HIV are currently accessing lifesaving antiretrovial therapy. The global spread of HIV infection and AIDS necessitates a worldwide effort to increase communication, education, and action to stop the spread of HIV. Whereas the Joint United Nations Program on HIV and AIDS observes December 1st of each year as a World AIDS Day and leads and inspires the world to achieve its shared vision of zero new HIV infections, zero discrimination, and zero AIDS-related deaths. And whereas in Palm Beach County, more than 8,200 persons are living with HIV and the Palm Beach County HIV Community Prevention Partnership and the Palm Beach County HIV Care Council through its partners are working together to renew HIV and AIDS awareness and to expand and strengthen the local effort to stop the spread of HIV in Palm Beach County on World AIDS Day. Now therefore, I, Angela Cruz, Vice Mayor of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim December 1st as World AIDS Day on behalf of Mayor Ty Pennsirga.
Do you want to say some words?
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, I am not Katoura Joseph. My name is Gloria Holsby. I'm the project manager, the project director at the Boynton Beach CDC for the outreach program. I'm proud to say that we were awarded a grant from the Office of Minority Human, the Health and Human Services Department to launch an innovative program in the Boynton Beach area, which is called Where My Sisters At? We service, we do outreach in the community to the women of color and persons with transgendered experience. We are boots on the ground and I'm proud to say we have been awarded twice over the grant and we have serviced over 200 women. We have educated over 200 women in our community who are eager to see me every month. And we also partner with other community agencies. And Midway is new, Midway Healthcare Services. They're new to the Boynton Beach area and they've been very active with providing HIV education along with me and testing. We are really happy about this and we hope that we can get your support as well. It's really going good and it's needed in our communities. It's ever so needed. We have a large population of homeless women, people, but women especially, who are vulnerable in this community. And we're just happy to have this program in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and hand this over to you.
Let me take this opportunity while Vice Mayor is coming back up to say thank you to Katoura and to you, Gloria, for the work you guys are doing here in our city. It's well-needed. That 14% is a large number. And I'm glad to see, let me say this, welcome, Midway, to our great city. I'm looking forward to meeting you and seeing what great things you are doing. And you're coupled with a great organization with Katoura and with Gloria. So welcome and thank you again.
Thank you all. Now, we're going to move on to item 3C. We're going to recognize Deputy City Clerk Tammy Stanzioni for achieving the Certified Municipal Clerk designation. Renee from the town of Gulfstream will present the, she's also part of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association. She's the president and she's going to present. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cruz, members of the Commission, Town Staff, and Attendees, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Renee Basel. I am the Florida Association of City Clerks Southeast District Director. I also serve as President of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association and I am currently the Town Clerk for the town of Gulfstream. It is with great pleasure that I appear here this evening to congratulate your city on the recent accomplishment of your Deputy City Clerk Tammy Stanzioni. I love saying that. I have an Italian husband, so I love saying Stanzioni. Upon receiving her Certified Municipal Clerk designation, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and its partner, the Florida Association of City Clerks, are professional associations that promote continuing education and certification through university and college-based institutes. IIMC's primary goal is to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks through extensive education programs, certification, publications, networking across the globe, annual conferences, and research. FACC's primary goal is to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks in the state of Florida by partnering with the Florida League of Cities and the Florida Institute of Government to meet the ever-changing educational needs of city and town clerks and deputy clerks and to improve their knowledge in areas such as public administration, law, management, elections, and many other disciplines. Currently, only 32% or 4,757 of the 14,755 members of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks have attained the Certified Municipal Clerk designation. And of the 669 members of the Florida Association City Clerks, 61% or 413 members have reached the Certified Municipal Clerk designation. To achieve the Certified Municipal Clerk designation, Tammy has gone through and completed the IIMC's Approved Municipal Clerks Institute Program conducted by the John Scott Daley Florida Institute of Government, Florida State University in Tallahassee. This program provides 120 student instructor contact hours of in-depth courses in managerial and leadership skills, social and interpersonal concerns, and technical training needed to deal with changes taking place in government today. The program aids municipal clerks in improving the job performance and recognizes the professionalism of the municipal clerk's office. Completion of a recognized career development academy or a baccalaureate degree in the public administration or related field, responsible experience in local government, and participation in conferences, meetings, and educational seminars are required to earn the prestigious Certified Municipal Clerk designation. But this is only the first step. A true professional never wants to rest on their success, but instead keep reaching higher. The Master Municipal Clerk Academy was established to further professional education of city clerks and to meet the challenges of the office. Academy members must demonstrate they actively engage in educational and professional participation that keeps them current with the changing events in the local government scene. And we all know that happens every day, right? Academy members seeking to earn the Master Municipal Clerk designation are required to attain 168 hours in advanced education with 80% coursework in public administration and 20% in electives and attain 20 points in professional and social contributions to include attendance in professional meetings and conferences and honors and awards received for specific individual achievements. This is quite a task considering the daily demands of the clerk's office. But I have no doubt Tammy is up to the task. Your clerk is now part of an elite group of professionals in local government, a group she could not have become part of without your commitment to support her efforts. On behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerks, President, Board of Directors and its members, the Florida Association of City Clerks Professional Education Committee and the Southeast District, we are all so very proud of you. Please join me in congratulating your Deputy City Clerk Tammy Stanzioni and the City of Boynton Beach on her impressive accomplishment as one of the newest Certified Municipal Clerks. Well done, Tammy.
Hold up, hold up. Okay, start over.
I want to just take a quick moment to congratulate Tammy personally. We are so proud of you. I'm excited to have another clerk on board that has the designation. And also Tammy also recently got her bachelor's degree. So keep doing great things. Thank you.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
I, too, would like to congratulate Tammy. I've been knowing Tammy now for just about all the time she's been here, some 14 years, I believe it is. And I can truly say Tam is top-notch. She's really shown her professionalism. Every time I've asked questions or needed guidance, Tammy was right there. And let me tell you, she's come, she comes on the shoulder of many great city clerks that we've had, that I can remember. I do remember Janet Panino, something like that. And then we had Judy. We had Judy. We had Krista Gibson. And now we have the one and only, Bailey. So you've really been a sponge on all of those clerks. And I'm very proud of you. I'm looking forward to greater things out of you. Congratulations.
Any other comments?
No. Thank you, Tammy. Congratulations.
Tammy, every instance that I've had to deal with you has always been very professional, very positive. And I just want to be excited for you and congratulate you and thank you for the service you give to our city every day. Thank you.
Can I just say, real quick? I just wanted to say congratulations. I'm excited for you and I'm excited to support you in getting your MMC. And thank you for being my right-hand woman.
Awesome. All right. Now, we're going to move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes. Personal attacks will not be tolerated and this is not a Q and A. You can line up on the other side of the room and I will call on you. We're going to start here to my left.
Harry Woodworth live here in Boynton Beach. I just had a couple of comments. So one is I've been up here before talking about the trash services and stuff. City did an outstanding job of communicating what was going on during Nicole. I mean, I know we all dodged a bullet, but there was communications everywhere about when the pickups were going to be. Not one single person in Inca called me, which is unusual. And there wasn't a green can on our street. So whoever's doing that, please do more of it. And in following up that last comment, I would include this commission meeting when the meetings are sliding something in on the webpage and then nothing else until the middle of today. It's just not the way a commission agenda that's been in place Tuesdays forever is coming. If we can get the trash stuff out, surely we can get it when this meeting is. I mean, you're hitting, you're hitting 1,000 on email. You're hitting, I mean, the Reggae Festival, I don't know how many notices I got on that. It would have just been nice if this meeting had received a little more notice that y'all knew it was going to move and to not tell people was kind of quiet. The other thing, I had just one personal issue. On the consent agenda item I, there's millions of dollars supplementing some stuff for the 2022 budget. There's some real good news in there, incremental income. You patched some holes. I think if items that are millions of dollars probably shouldn't be on the consent agenda. I mean, there's some good stuff in here. You could talk about it, brag about it, whatever. But to slide something like that on the consent agenda, and in my opinion, is just not a typical run-of-the-mill business item. That's, somebody ought to discuss that in public. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. Five things. First of all, how was there money for Reggae Fest but not Pirate Fest? Pirate Fest brings in, and thank you for addressing that, Commissioner Turkin. This is embarrassing. Pirate Fest, we have the second biggest one in the state, brings in tens of thousands of people, untold amounts of money, and we just threw it out the window, but yet we have a Reggae Fest. Number two, I think it was wrong to move this meeting. I understand it was because somebody was going to be out of town for some meeting. Who cares? Unless it's going to directly impact quorum, you have your meeting. There was absolutely zero reason to move the meeting to tonight. And I haven't run across a single person that's the least bit happy that you moved it. In addition to what Harry said about not having any press about it, it's just wrong. Just having one person absent is not the end of the day. They've had meetings forever with people out at conventions or whatever they're doing and they were still able to run. So all that matters is that at least three of you show up and that's the end of it. There should, this should have never been moved. Number three, Officer Rick Ross passed at the beginning of COVID. I stood up and said something then that we should be doing something to memorialize this officer. He's an officer in this city for decades. He ran east-west karate. All of you are shaking your heads because everyone in this city had some kind of contact with him at some point. Whereas I don't know a single person that knew Officer Crowder and I'm certainly not advocating getting rid of that park or changing the name. But why have we not yet done something for Officer Ross? And I said it within a couple of days after his death and we still haven't done anything and it's been two more years. So let's get off our butts on that. Number four, Harry is right. How are we throwing $2 million worth of overtime into a consent agenda? First of all, why the heck do we need $2 million in overtime? Why is this being, not being made transparent? Why is this not being discussed? So I hope that will be addressed. And my last thing is, once again, I'm going to start advocating for the White Roof Project. I will start bringing you information. It is something we need to be looking at. I got part of it pushed through on for commercial buildings a couple of years ago through the commission. But we really need to be looking at this closer if we want to have a direct positive impact on climate mitigation. So expect for me to start talking to you more about that. But you might want to start looking into the White Roof Project. You can Google it. Thank you.
I'll take the next person to my left.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Stewart. I'm the owner of Festival Management Group and the company that brought the Reggae Fest to you this past Saturday. I'm just here to thank you and your staff. All the staff that we came in contact with and worked with were just amazing. Your police, your fire. We couldn't have had a better welcome to our inaugural festival. And we really just want to thank you for your support. We look forward to coming back again next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Glory Goseby, 327 Boynton Beach Circle. I just want to, a couple of weeks ago, Mayor Cruz, you asked about supportive housing, and I don't think it was clarified to you. We have a supportive housing program at the Boynton B C D C, or the outreach program. And what we do, we provide housing to homeless, people who are homeless, chronically homeless and have, who are disabled. And the reason I point this out, I just want to give you an example of what happened last month that really touched me with the police department. We had a gentleman, he came to me chronically homeless two and a half years ago. He, he's been working for those two and a half years. His employer caught COVID, so he, he couldn't work anymore. His last day at work, he had his rent, and he was robbed. So we've been housing him with no income, and so one of the detectives from your department called me and asked if there was anything that we can do to help him. And I explained the program to the program that we have. And there was a sigh of relief to know that we have this program in place in the city of Boynton. We've been doing this for four and a half years, and we have housed, I want to, I can't give you an exact number, like maybe 216 folks who have gone on to get their own apartment through, through us advocating and getting them on Section 8, or getting them disabilities for their chronic, chronic mental health issues. Okay.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I have to keep the rules for everyone.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank the department for recognizing.
Thank you so much.
So my name is Angel. I am with Midway Specialty Care. I am the outreach coordinator there, and just like you were saying, about 73% of people in Palm Beach County have HIV and are not in care. And so our office is a nonprofit organization, so we take all insurances, and we help people who are positive get proper care. We get them connected with the Ryan White Insurance. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we do have two locations, and we should definitely know our status. So regardless if you're in a relationship or not in a relationship, you would be helping HIV and the epidemic by getting tested. So on December 1st, we do invite everyone and the city of Boynton Beach and all the surrounding cities to get tested. Free testing is always available at Midway Specialty Care. Thank you, guys.
Do we have any other speakers?
Has this been antisepticized? When was the last?
Go ahead and start your time.
When was the last time you cleaned any of this stuff? I think it's funny, everything's a joke in this dirty city. Ernest McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Unit 407. I'm an owner here since November of 2020. I can't tell you. I come from a very corrupt area in New York and New Jersey, and I thought, after 70-something years, I got to get out of this area, Jersey and New York. And I thought, perfect, I'm coming to Palm Beach County, you know? Freedom, dignity, law and order. And I bought a place in Boynton Beach. You talk about a learning experience. You talk about a life endangerment. You know how many injuries I've suffered in this town because of a lot of people sitting in this room? And just this past Friday, right in front of City Hall, another person working for the city physically attacked me, right? My blood pressure went over 100, over 90. I could have died on the spot. And this group in blue here wouldn't even respond. They laugh, they think everything is funny, everything is a joke here. And then when you ask for cameras, they say, oh, oh, we're sorry, those cameras don't work. Oh. How long are you going to get? He thinks everything's funny, this one here. Yeah, that's all you do. You're not supposed to talk now. You're not supposed to.
Address this as a whole.
Excuse me?
You will address this body as a whole. You will not single anyone out.
Who did I single out?
Your time is still running.
What?
Your time is running.
Who did I single out? Okay. So what I don't understand is all these recordings of how you're running these meetings and emails that we're sending out to your city and to your city officials that you're not responding to? And, and, and this is how we get treated here? We get threatened when we come in here. You keep changing the meeting so most of the people don't know about it? Look, who's here? When did you put up on the billboard that the meeting was tonight instead of tomorrow night? Would you put it up? Today? You wonder why no one's here? And that's the way you want to do it? You see? And where's Amir Tyron Persuga? The one who's got the most to say against everybody? Hey, look. You know? You know what it's like standing up here having people aggressive towards you from this podium? It never stops here. And the cameras are all over the city. You keep refusing to let us get the cameras or the footage. People are afraid to go out of the house. There's disease everywhere, drugs, crime, violence. Look, look at it.
Your time is up.
Mayor laughed, he thinks everything's a joke.
That's why you did so good in the election.
Stephen B. Grant, P O Box 424, Boynton Beach, Florida 33425. So one of the things that never was accomplished in the six years that I was mayor was the signs in the city. We have multiple signs coming from Delray, Incorporated, Boynton Beach. They are decades old, and it looks like they haven't been improved for decades. I don't know if, I don't think the money's in this budget, but it's something that should be in next year's budget, and so that hopefully you, with the new city manager, are able to rectify that issue, because when I'm coming back on Wilbright or from, was it Northeast Second to Seacrest, seeing what Boynton Beach has where if it's in our CRA, we have those very nice signs, but it's just maintaining what we do have, I think is lacking. And then we had the historical markers that have been eroded by the sun, that either we fix them or we take them out, but having nothing there is not something that is looking good. And the last thing is, is that I know that on the future discussion, you have the American Rescue Plan Act. One of the things that I've always wanted that the city move forward in that there were, was talks a while back ago for a bike sharing program. It's something that is an enterprise fund that hopefully the city can get more involved with. It might not make money when it first started off, but it's something that most people here in Boynton Beach use bicycles for transportation, not necessarily recreation. And it's something where the city needs to show the county and the state that own the major roads, we need to have adequate bicycle facilities. One of the major reasons is, is that golf carts are a huge means of transportation. And with the way that the state roads and county roads work, is that if they are more than 35 miles per hour, a golf cart cannot be on them unless there is an eight-foot sidewalk. And so one of the things that I was able to do on the Transportation Planning Agency is withhold $12 million worth of funding from FDOT because they were trying to make a six-foot sidewalk on the Boynton Beach Boulevard interchange. And having that eight-foot sidewalk now means that people from Leisureville can go by Palm Beach Eyes to get onto the sidewalk to take their golf cart, because we're planning on having 15-foot sidewalks east of I-95. And so that's where I'd like to do it, is making sure that transportation and communication is better in the city. So thank you.
All right, this is the last time that we'll accept digital hands for our virtual speakers. Manny, how many virtual hands do we have raised right now?
There are no hands raised at this moment.
Okay, perfect. We have nothing under administrative. We're going to move on to consent agenda.
We actually have, we moved 10A.
I apologize, you're right.
We moved 10A, and I just want to address some things in public comment. Reggae Fest was a private event, and they had rented out the venue from the city. And then I think the reason the meeting was rescheduled to today was because I believe all five of us are attending the National League of Cities Conference, and tomorrow is a travel day, so it would affect that quorum. And then another good point that was brought up for Officer Ross, I know that we're reconstructing J.C. Park, so that may be a topic for discussion to set him a more, more valuable for.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about Rick Ross. He, he retired from the city in good standing. He was always there helping veterans. I know one, probably about five years ago, there was a veteran that committed suicide over in Savannah Lakes, and Rick Ross was the first on scene. He got there before I could. So he definitely was somebody that had a big reach in the city. He passed away of COVID, I want to say in 2020, and luckily I was able to have lunch with him probably two weeks prior. So it kind of took us all by surprise, and I thank Susan for bringing that up. He taught self-defense to countless young ladies, kids, stuff like that over on South Fed. So definitely, definitely, I think that that would be the right move to make sure his, his legacy lives on.
Now we're going to move on to item 10A, discussion on changing sister cities. Commissioner Turk, and you requested this item. Do you want to begin?
I think I had enough language last commission meeting. I think this is really for, for y'all, my colleagues. Do we have someone from Sister Cities here?
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Hevlin, President of Sister Cities, 734 Northeast 9th Avenue. I hope my voice holds up. I know you had a discussion last meeting. I'm sorry, I was not aware it was coming up. I would have been here. Just a little bit, again, I know Susan Oyer, our Vice President, had talked a little bit about what Sister Cities is. It's interesting, President Eisenhower created Sister Cities in 1956. This was during the Cold War. Tensions were very high around the world, and his belief that was that people from different cultures could understand each other at a local level. It's kind of a grassroots, appreciate, celebrate their differences. The mission of Sister Cities is to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. I've been to three of our four sister cities, unfortunately not number four because COVID hit about a month later. And the relationships, what you learn about the culture, the exchange of ideas is really profound. We've had good support from the city. I know Commissioner Hay has been a supporter of us, Mayor Penserga, Stephen Grant. We are an independent 501(c)(3) organization, but we're closely with the city in everything we do. So I would look forward to your support. Just a few facts, there are over 500 U.S. cities in 1,800 cities abroad in 138 different countries, so it is a very large international organization, and I think the city should be proud of being part of Sister Cities International.
Thank you, Jean, for that. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, so I think, I think really the question here for me, and I think for what I gathered from y'all last commission meeting, is what is the process to switch a sister city? No, I don't think there's any discussion about leaving the organization or not partnering with the organization, but what is the process of changing a current sister city? Because, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, sister cities are not usually dropped, or, and I know you're referring to China. We've basically been inactive for probably at least 10 years, and we've chosen to just leave it that way. We didn't feel there was any need to do anything official. We have had no contact with them. That happens with sister cities, people move on, personalities change, and relationships change accordingly. As far as new sister cities, I believe you'd expressed interest in acquiring one. Procedure would be, and anybody in the city or any resident can come to Sister Cities, Boynton Beach Sister Cities, recommend some, a city you're interested in, why you're interested, what you think it would bring to Boynton. We look for things like commonality between the communities, either geographically, economically. We would need somebody to take hold of that, take a leadership, leadership position in implementing delegation visits and programs between those two cities. Is it a safe place to go and travel to? There are places in the world, I don't think some of us would go right now, things like that. So it would then be up to our committee to determine if we feel it's a good fit. We then come back to the city commission and make a recommendation. You all approve it or not. So you do have the final say.
And when you say that someone would have to take that leadership role into identifying what that new sister city would be, or any suggestions, you're referring to someone on the board, correct?
Wouldn't have to be, but we have, each sister city has a chair, and we would ask if we take on new sister cities, that there be a chair. Preferably that chair would have a group of volunteers from the community that would be anxious to work on that sister city, develop some programs, I say arrange delegation visits. Usually we visit a sister city before making it official to really meet with them, talk to them, what are the things we both want to see out of the relationship, and, you know, meet them in person before, before we'd make that decision. Excuse me. The voice is going.
Thank you for that. On the literature that I got from staff last week, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, it mentioned in the literature to remove a sister city, all that is needed is a letter signed from the mayor, or one of the sister cities delivered to that sister city.
Yeah, and I don't know if you saw, this is a policy from Sister Cities International, the political suspension cancellation policy for sister cities. And I'll read part of it, if my voice holds up. While every citizen should feel free to express their own opinions in keeping with his or her own conscience, the suspension of a sister city relationship due to disagreement over government policy or practice can be counterproductive and contrary to the stated mission of sister city relationships promoting peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. I have copies for you if you'd like them.
That'd be great. So, and, and, and I respect that, and the key word there is freedom. And I, I think what I've learned today is that this is a sister city we've been inactive for, that you said, for 10 years, we haven't been in touch with. So why are we not working with a sister city that wants to hear from us or that we will hear from them? You know, if we're, if, if we're going to engage into something like this, it needs to go both ways. So I, I would like to explore an option of finding a different sister city.
And there's no reason we can't have multiple sister cities. And I don't mean to really correct Susan, but Fort Lauderdale has 18, not 100. And I don't mean to really correct Susan, but Fort Lauderdale has 18, not 116 or whatever. It was just a misinformation. So, it's not preventing us from taking on additional cities, is my point.
Right. So, is it a normal practice to just continue relationships with cities even though we're not, we're not engaging with them, they're not engaging with us, and they're just hanging by the wayside? Is that normal, or, because I would imagine if there's a policy to remove that sister city from the perfect example that you gave of being inactive, you know, why, why wouldn't other municipalities not do that?
And all the people I've met through Sister Cities at conferences and conventions, many of them do have an inactive or dormant sister city. And again, it's a change of personalities. We never know, things change all the time. It's not doing us any harm, it's not preventing us from adding sister cities. And we've, I say as a board, we've chosen to just leave it.
Understood. So, I, I would like to look into dissolving this with a letter from the chair and exploring, uh, different, different options. I'm willing to take that leadership role if none of my colleagues want to. I'm willing to collaborate. I'd love to sit down with you and Susan and see what that looks like and, and go from there.
Um, we Now, my recommendation would be to put it in a dormant status if that is what you want. And Sister Cities does have a category, they call it emeritus, where if you have an inactive sister city, you can just say it's been dormant, or leave it there.
Perfect.
And that is an option.
One sec, I don't think we have public comment right now, do we? Just attorney, do we?
This is a discussion and, uh,
It's Stephen Grant.
Unless you take action.
Uh, I would like to hear from Mr. Grant, because I think he's a You've got some knowledge on this.
So, I was able to attend the Sister Cities Conference in Washington, D.C., and the whole thing is to promote unity, because it's something where it's not necessarily the big governments, it's the local governments that affect everyone more on that local level. And the, we saw with the president today, they're, they're still meeting with the Chinese counterparts. It's not that by dropping the status, China's going to go away. My background is that I studied law in China, and so I'd be happy to draft a letter to, with the City Commission's permission, so that we extend the status to see if they want to respond. Because it's one thing for us not to talk to them and them not to talk to us. It's another thing for us to try to speak with them and have a relationship, and then not, them not reciprocate. So, I think that it's better that we have a conversation, or try to have a conversation, rather than saying, well, because they didn't call us for 10 years, and we didn't call them for 10 years, then we should end it. That's because there, there is the, the history with it, and the fact we are a very different city than when we were 20 years ago, and to see if they even remember what we were back then, when we had a town square clock. And now we have a town square and no clock. So, but I, I also agree with you that we should expand the, the program. And, um, I know that the Sister Cities have asked at certain CRA functions. And so, I, I do believe that we could find interest in the, the state, uh, country of Israel. And so, that's something that I will work with the Sister Cities organization to expand our reach in, uh, in the world.
Thank you.
Is there something new that's being added? My understanding was we're removing, you wanted to remove China, is there something?
Well, I think the recommendation is to move Kufu into a dormant status, correct?
Yeah, we would not be in favor of removing it for political purposes, or because of
Well, this is because it's inactive.
Okay, on that basis, yes, it is dormant. I think we'd be fine with that.
Okay.
That still would require a letter, I believe, from the mayor.
So, I want to hear from my other colleagues. Commissioner Kelly, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I think that we just, we need to continue exploring. I'm, I mean, if, in my opinion, if it's, if we're, it's a country that, or a city that we have not been in contact with for several years. And, and I understand, Stephen, your position, your thoughts about, well, we should reach out one more time. But at the same time, I, there's this disconnect. And, and it's my understanding that there were relationships and connections when this city first became a sister city. And now those connections with our city are not there anymore. And so, I would, I am not opposed to, uh, you know, requesting that it be put in a dormant state. And I think, um, the second part of that, Commissioner Turk, and I would support you in your quest to add another sister city, I'd be happy to help in whatever way I can. I know that you spoke at the last meeting about a city in Ukraine, and I think that we have enough, people who have come over from Ukraine, and we have enough, um, you know, local interaction, that I think that it's something to, to look into and see if we can, uh, you know, gain the support. Like she was saying, you have to get a committee of, of volunteers and city leaders. And, and so I think that that is definitely something that I'm in support of, of pursuing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hay?
Yes, I guess I see things a little, little different. I hear what my colleagues are saying, Commissioner Turk. But I just think, um, we should be promoting peace around the world. As I look at my TV and I see all the evil that's going on and hatred, to have a, uh, an organization, an opportunity here, uh, which is, is no harm to us. It's not costing us millions and millions of dollars. But to promote peace around the world, I think it's a good thing. Uh, I think we should have the added more Sister Cities, uh, rather than talking about changing one. And I would, um, support, uh, the idea of, um, touching base with them one way or another. I'm not so sure. Steve Grant, Turner Steve Grant, uh, what you suggested would be the way, uh, outside of, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that, uh, except for working with our legal, uh, department, uh, having their hands in that also.
Correct, I wasn't sending the letter, I was drafting it.
Okay, and, and, and I, I would, I would do that, uh, I would reach out to them. I, I just feel that, uh, the exchange of ideas, we should not politicize this. That's the concern that I have. Just because you have, uh, someone in power in the government that none of us like, but the people are good people, just like over here. I guarantee you, there are people around the world who are saying they don't like our leaders. But there are good peoples here, good people here. The same thing with, uh, North Korea, Russia, uh, Ukraine. You look at all these, they're, they're good, solid people there. And I think if you get, uh, the only reason that we are strangers to one another, that we haven't gotten to know them yet. A stranger is just, just a person that I, I have not met yet. Once I meet you, and I began to talk with you, and we exchange ideas, I think there's great hope there. But if we don't hit it off, then hey, we go our separate ways. But I think there's too much positive to gain through the Sister Cities. Just to say, uh, let's cut it off because we, someone had a bad experience with that. I think there's, there's an opportunity here that we really need to explore before we just cut it off. So, that's where I am now. I just, I just feel that, uh, that the commonality between human beings is enough to try and preserve. Okay, and I, I guess this is why I've been involved with Sister Cities over the years. I still believe in it, okay? And I think there's, that there's hope to be gained here. Should we be looking at those who we have not heard from? Yes, and we should find out why, okay? And if it comes to a situation where we think we need to dissolve this, then let's do it. I have, I'm, I'm not against that. But, but, but just for the sake of dissolving, because you haven't heard from them in X amount of time, I think is the wrong direction we should take.
Thank you, yeah, we don't, we don't, as I said before, we don't see the need to do anything, um, official or permanently. We're just kind of letting it lie. Governments change. We've not had a bad experience with them. We had some great ones when we were active, so.
Yeah, and I think, again, Commissioner Hay, just so you understand what we're talking about here, we're not dissolving the Sister Cities, we're, we're working with them, we're just
I'm not saying, I understand.
One at a time.
I understand.
Just so we're on the same page, and it would be moving into a dormant status. It wouldn't be eliminating, it would be a dormant status.
I'm not sure I understand.
I think that, um, like, 10 years, it's been 10 years since we've had contact or something. Probably would be another 10 years if I didn't bring this up. And so, I think the best predictor of the future is the past. So, I'm going to stay firm on moving this to a dormant status, and then exploring and adding more Sister Cities.
Okay, so
Yeah, I was just corrected by Stephen Grant. I'd forgotten, we do our Young Artists, um, Young Authors Competition every year. And up until maybe five years ago, um, we were getting artwork sent from Chufu, um, students over there, and that participated in our Young Artists, so there has been that contact. I was thinking more in terms of delegations visiting each other.
And if I just say, I, I know we're not, we don't want to go on back and forth, but, um, I understand what you're saying. And I would support, uh, the dormant until we look into this further, okay? To see where are we, uh, what is, what are their position, what are their, what are they thought, what are their thoughts? And along with what, what our thoughts are. And then we go from there, rather than just one-sided. So, let's just kind of, uh, come to the table, okay? Because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, okay? So, I think if we come to the table and, and dialogue, uh, then we can, uh, uh, move in the right direction.
Commissioner Hay, I think that is a great idea. Let's move to dormant, and then explore, and then we'll go from there.
Right.
All right.
I would think that's kind of reversed, that should be explored first, and then if there was no contact, we go dormant?
So, um, for me, um, just quickly, my two cents, um, I'm fine with going dormant with this one specific city. I understand we have a new administration, we have different ideas. And I'm okay with looking into other potential cities that we could be, we could have as partners for Sister Cities. I do want to ask a question of the attorney, if we wanted to move forward with this, what would be the requirement?
Well, if you want to move forward, just to adopt a motion that would provide direction or authority. For example, if you wanted, uh, do a motion to request the mayor to send a letter placing, you know, the city on dormant status, and Susan has an example, be done a motion or a combination motion, dormant plus explore through the city manager's office. And if you want to delegate one of your own to lead that as well, additional cities, and report back to the commission, that you could do that in form of a motion.
Perfect.
First, so I want to, I want to thank Jean for coming in and, and speaking to us. We really, we really appreciate you coming in and explaining the process. And if you wanted to, go ahead and
Yep, entertain the motion to, um, Mike, help me out with this. Go give direction to staff to place it in dormant status, and then do research, and then we can revisit that. Kufu.
Yeah.
Chufu.
Chufu, to, to, the motion would be to, I guess this letter has to come from the mayor to, to authorize the, uh, the city administration to work with the mayor to send a letter requesting that Chufu be placed in dormant status. And then to also have the city manager work with, um, Sister Cities and explore other options for another sister city, for the city of Boynton Beach.
I need a recorder and just record you when you say that. So, uh, yes, I'd like to make that motion. Do I need to go say it all, or do we have?
Maile, you have that, right?
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second, okay? All in favor? Discussion, I follow.
I want to discuss. A little further clarification here. What do we mean by putting in, I like the concept that was brought up, uh, by Jeannie, uh, have I learned about switching it around? So, I guess what I, what I, what I'm looking for is, what do we mean by putting it in dormant? What, what, what is, I know it's inactive, I know what that means and all that kind of stuff, but there's no harm done here, one way or the other. So, why can't it still be, until we research it and find out what's really going on, uh, and then make our move? What's, what's wrong with that?
I think it's the same whether it's where we're at now or dormant. And that's what I'll say about that.
Vice Mayor, I guess my only question is, um, by switching it to a dormant status, let's just, for argument's sake, say that the, the alignment is still there, they reach out, we have contact. How then do we restore that if we, I guess that's my question. Are we, are we doing too many steps ahead to where it would be more complex to go backwards after it's in a dormant state?
Yeah, I think so. Let me, if I could, just read on the rest of this policy from Sister Cities International. "Suspending sister city relationships closes a channel of communication through which meaningful dialogue may be held. Our policy is to encourage our members in U.S. communities to keep their sister city relationships active, especially when political issues threaten to disrupt the positive constructive relationships that have been made." Yeah, I don't understand the need to
We're not suspending it. But we're not suspending it. Suspending it would be asking the mayor to write a letter to suspend the sister city. We're not suspending that, so we could still keep lines of communication for what your policy, what you just read. Because we're not suspending it, you know, I think that that's, uh, meant to interpretation. And so, the way I interpret that is, you know, we're not suspending it, it's just going into a dormant status, and then we'll move forward with communication.
Yeah, I just don't understand what difference that will make, but
I think it is in a dormant status because there has been no communication. And so, what we're kind of asking then is, is that do we want to take it out of dormant status and send them a letter? Or do we want to keep it dormant, uh, because if you're not trying to suspend them?
We, uh, we were just informed that we could place it into a dormant status. So, are we placing it into a dormant status, or is it already in dormant status? Because I'm hearing a different thing from you, Mr. Grant, and I'm hearing a different thing from you.
Okay, it basically is dormant, it's not officially dormant, uh, under Sister Cities guidelines. They would call it a, um, Sister City emeritus. Means that it's officially dormant, and Sister Cities recognizes that, and the two mayors have signed off on that.
Is there a time limit which it goes on the dormant, at the five years, at the six years, at the 10?
I don't think so.
You don't think so, what, that is a limit?
I don't think there's a time limit. I mean, dormant is, I used to be in real estate, what, seven years or?
Yeah, the, it's not necessarily dormant status, it's emeritus status.
That would be the official Sister Cities International status.
So, we're, we're, we're not 100% sure right now, is what I'm hearing.
I think we, we're doing some semantics here a little bit. I think we just need to go ahead on
Motion's on the table.
Vote on this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll support what you were saying, because it's, it's the same way, six, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other.
That's right.
So, I, I second it, and let's, that's where
Okay, so, is your motion to put in emeritus, emeritus start?
The original motion.
Okay. We have a motion.
Right?
And then research.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with it.
Yep. Real quick, uh, do you guys want staff to explore a, a new sister city? Is that the direction you're
Yes.
Can we get, um, can we get input from all the commissioners to see, like, you know, maybe if each commissioner can bring up, uh, one or two cities?
I think that's a great idea.
What is, to get another?
Yes, to get like a new sister city, or
In place of, or in addition?
No, 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 in addition.
Addition to.
Addition to, okay, then I can go along with that.
That was part of the motion.
I can go along with that.
So, do we bring up to maybe like our next meeting, um, ideas for two sister cities for each commissioner? And discuss it at the next meeting, do you all want? And discuss it at the next meeting? Do you all wanna?
Nail it down from there. Same, same way we do with the city manager, to pick all our candidates, nail it down from there.
Is that, is that, I mean, do you have consensus on this or what do you all think?
I think that's fine, except I, what I know from what she just spoke about is that it also involves their board more than it involves our board. And so there's a lot more interaction with sister cities that we need to happen in order to even move that forward. So although I think it's, it's important that we continue this conversation and we kind of decide and agree on what, uh, road we wanna go down, but we need to continue to involve sister cities. And I think that's what the motion, it directed city staff to work with sister cities to make sure that we're, we're moving everything in the right direction, that we're not just going to talk at the next meeting or in a month, and we're gonna agree, but then it just kind of drops off. So that's, I mean, my only feedback is that we make sure that city staff understands and, and knows that our direction is that they're working with cities, with sister cities to make sure as to what the process is and how, what it's gonna require. Cause she said it requires, uh, city volunteers and people to get behind, uh, whatever city it is that we, uh, agreed to move forward with. So there's a lot, it's a lot more involvement than just us talking about cities. So I just, I wanted to put that on the record.
I think that's a great idea. Maybe we could get like a presentation on how this all works. Is that, is that possible? Can we have staff?
Jamie, are you gonna work on a, a presentation?
Yeah, my, my only, uh, I need a point of clarity. Because I need to know, are you guys going to bring your sisters, sister cities to the dais and actually discuss them and narrow them down? Or do you want staff to look at different, differing si, sister silly cities? Because I, going forward, I just wanna make sure that we have some ideas that we can actually go with and present to the board of the sister cities.
Commissioner Hay?
My position is this, that it's, in the past, we've had sister cities do the legwork, the research and everything, and then they bring a recommendation to us. And we vote on it. We, I don't wanna get into the habit of doing legwork to determine which city should be the next sister city. We have enough to do, at least I do. And so I just feel that that is a job for sister cities to do. Do the research, bring the recommendation to us, and we go, we voted up or down. That's where I am. I, I don't wanna come back next meeting with my recommendation on what city, uh, y, you know, I want to be the next sister city. I don't do.
I, I agree with that, but I think we can collaborate, you know? Collaboration's a great word.
I think the city manager needs clarity.
So let's work with sister cities.
Yes.
And maybe if it's okay, we can each meet with sister cities if we want to.
Right.
And discuss what maybe some of our own recommendations are.
Right.
If they're possible, give it to them.
Right.
So you don't have to do any legwork.
You got it. Thank you, thank you.
And then we'll go from there.
Sound like a plan.
Good to go.
All right. Sounds good. Um, all right, now, uh, there's nothing under administrative. We're gonna move on to consent agenda. Besides item six C, uh, which Commissioner Hay pulled, is there anything else that my colleagues would like to pull from consent?
Are we on consent agenda?
I think it was six D.
Six D.
Yeah.
It was six C or D?
D.
I want to pull two of them, as a matter of fact. I wanna pull, uh, six D as in Dorothy, dog, delicious. And I also would like to pull, uh, six I.
I, so not C. All right. Okay. Do my colleagues wanna get anything else out of consent?
No, I made, um, I made my comment earlier on the, over a hundred thousand.
All right, um, if not, can I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we're gonna move on to item six D. Commissioner Hay, you asked to, um, do you wanna start the discussion on this?
Uh, yes, I, I really do. Uh, this, um, is a great program. I had the opportunity to participate in it, uh, with the kids, uh, buying, uh, toys. And, uh, they each got a hundred dollars. I don't know what it is now. But, uh, you go in with that kid and they, and they, they just buy until the money runs out. What really got to me was the kid that I had at the time, he was buying all of these toys. It was a he. And he bought a doll. And I says, you know, just very politely, oh, you play with dolls? He said, no, this is for my sister. And this is for my other brother. And this is, I says, where, where, where's the stuff for you? He says, oh, wow, I'll get something. I mean, that really touched me. And, and I just feel that, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see this, uh, program. And I just wanted the chief to, uh, just kind of talk a little bit more about it, uh, because it's, it's a great program. So Chief DeJulio.
Joe DeJulio, Police Chief. Uh, and it is a great program, Commissioner. Uh, I think the, the officers actually enjoy it more than the kids. They come out of their pockets numerous times. I guess the, uh, the only concerns we have is that we're only dealing with seven of our schools. And we're only dealing with seventy kids. It's only one time a year. So by reallocating some of the funding from the gun buyback or the gift cards for guns, we're able to hopefully address all twelve of our schools and, and get more kids involved. And not just the kids, but also their families, because you hit it right on the head. A lot of times you go shopping, they wanna buy something for their mom or their grandmother. And at the end, they don't get anything from themselves. And usually that's when the officer's like, oh, what do you wanna? I'm gonna make sure I get it for you. So we wanna make sure that we're providing an opportunity to also assist families as well. So by reallocating the money, we can address those. And the other part is, is I wanna not just have it one time a year. I also think it'd be a great opportunity to do in the beginning of the school year as well. So by doing this, we can, we can get more shop with a cop activities throughout the year, not just once during the holiday, but also we're dealing with not just seventy kids. I don't wanna put a number on there, but we definitely wanna increase it.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I, I, I think if we're really serious about our kids, we need to invest it in our kids. And what better way to do it, uh, than to, this program, this is just one of many, hopefully, uh, shop with the cop program. It, it's a, it's a, and I don't know how many of you even know about the shop with the cop program, but, uh, it, it is really a great program. When you see these kids who, who have nothing, and, and all of a sudden they can go in a store and just pick out what they want, that, that's just exciting. It, it, there are no words to describe it. So, thank you, Chief.
And this is gonna be the eighteen, what, we've done eighteen. We're in our nineteenth year of shop with a cop. Um, also due to COVID, we weren't able to actually go shopping with the kids the past two years. So we did the list through, uh, their teachers, and then we brought the bags to the school. So this year, we're actually doing it at the, um, at the schools. So I, I'll put out all the information and when we're doing that. So if you guys wanna join and participate in the shopping, which is a fantastic day, um, I'll let you all know the dates.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
I, I think this is a great idea. Um, couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Hay. And I love the idea of doing this again in the beginning of the school year also. I think that's huge. Cause that can always be a tough time, you know, for parents and, um, and kids. So I, uh, I look forward to hearing more about this and, you know, if I can participate, you know, I'd, I'd love to.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I, as someone who has personally experienced, um, shop with the cop, um, it is, it is something that, um, the kids, not only do the officers and city staff, uh, remember it forever, but these kids remember it. And, and they always buy for their families, uh, which is always, it's, it's really cool to see. Cause I, I mean, I have two kids and they fight like cats and dogs, but at the end of the day, they also have each other's back and will be the first one to ask, you know, when they get to go shopping for the holidays for their siblings. So I, I love it. I can't wait to get the dates. Um, I do also agree. I love the idea of doing a back to school, uh, kind of themed shop with a cop for school supplies and backpacks, because that's something that, uh, you know, most kids start the school year without things that they, that are necessities. So I love that we are expanding it or trying to expand it. And I know that there's a lot of people in the community that are always looking for ways to give. And so, uh, this is a great, uh, you know, a great program. And if you are looking for ways to, to donate or give, uh, I know the PD would accept it knowing, you know, greatly, for sure. Thank you.
Just to add to that, the dates are December sixth, December seventh, December eighth. It's the Walmart on Old Boynton on the sixth, Target on the seventh, and on the eighth, it's the Walmart on South Head.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, last few comments from me. Um, this is a great program. We definitely appreciate you all for putting this together. That's why I wanted to make sure I put some of my community funds, uh, to make sure that we have enough of that for this year. Hopefully, it's gonna be a great year for the kids. For the city manager, can we make sure that Kendra puts that on our calendars to make sure that we're all present there?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good, Chief.
Thanks.
All right, now we're gonna move on to, um.
A motion on that. They're requesting the authority to do that.
Yep.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
Second it by Commissioner Turkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to six I, proposed resolution number R twenty-two dash one seven one. Commissioner Hay, do you wanna start?
Yes, I, uh, was looking at this early, and then, then it was brought up by at least a couple of our citizens, uh, about this. Uh, we, we're talking about, uh, over two million dollars here in sales tax. And I ju, I just need a little more explanation on the, on the fund operating or the capital, uh, budgets, or, you know, just kind of lay it all out in layman's term, so that we can, uh, get a better understanding of, okay, Amanda?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Fredericksen, uh, Director of Financial Services. So the year-end amendment is something that is part of our annual process. It's something that we do on an annual basis. Cause as you know, the budget is only our best guess at the time. Um, so the year-end is kind of recognizing additional revenues and, um, additional expenses as they come in. So the general fund, yes, we did experience about a two million dollar increase in expenses on mostly overtime. As you have vacancies and budgeted positions, overtime costs us more. So, um, operationally, a lot of that overtime is due to a lot of the vacancies and things like that. What I will tell you is that we also experienced an increase in revenue in our state revenue sharing and our sales tax. So none of these expenditures are coming out of fund balance. They are all coming out of additional revenues received. And actually, we anticipate giving back about two million dollars to fund balance for the end of twenty-two. So while the expenditures were exceeded, sort of the revenues as well. So we saw an increase there. That's for the general fund. Same thing with actually all of the funds. Our solid waste fund, we had some overtime expenses, but we made up for those in the commercial revenue and the multifamily refuse, uh, pickup as well. In the fleet fund, fuel, um, costs were up about two hundred and twenty thousand, and we made up for that in sale of surplus equipment. So vehicles, the cost of those, or the auction of those increased significantly this year. So we made up about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars there in revenue. And then the Boynton Beach Memorial Park Fund, there was about nine thousand dollars in extra cost in electric and water and sewer. And the sale of the mausoleum crypts, uh, made up for that in revenue. So none of these expenses are coming out of fund balance. They're all additional revenues back to.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Amanda. That was a good explanation.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
Mara, thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
Very helpful.
Thank you, Mara. I like your suit jacket.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Yep.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes unanimously. Now we're gonna move on to number seven, consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars. Commissioner Turkin, I understand you wanted to pull item seven A. Is there any other item that my colleagues would like to pull? No? Okay, perfect. Can I have a motion to approve the remainder?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry. I, I did wanna pull, uh, seven D as in Dorothy, dog.
Problem? Anything else? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bits and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Perfect. Commissioner Turkin, seven A.
Yeah, I want Chief DeJulio to talk about this. This is around the, uh, dash cams, uh, for the PD, which I think is a great step in the right direction. So I just wanna hear some clarity on.
Joe DeJulio, Police Chief. So we are re-entering a contract with Axon. Axon provides us our body cams, and it will now be providing us with our dash cams. We are adding a hundred dash cams, uh, this year. It is budget neutral. It's also a refresh on our body cams. We're also adding forty-five more cameras, body cameras as well. Uh, so we'll be able to outfit all our officers in uniform. In fact, it'll, it'll outfit everybody with the execution command staff on body cams. And the vehicles will be all our marked vehicles. Uh, also, we, we have a redaction, uh, enhanced software with all our, uh, public records requests. Body cams are labor intensive when it comes to redactions. It's about a minute for every minute of video. Uh, so this will help, um, lessen the workload, but also that'd make us more efficient when we are, um, providing these public records. And the last thing that the contract provides is, um, a third-party digital evidence, um, database. So right now we have two databases that take, uh, elect, uh, digital evidence, evidence.com, and we have one other. This will streamline into one. So this makes the officer's job a little bit more efficient. And the more efficient their job is when it comes to the paperwork and the video and the evidence, the more time they can be out on the street. Uh, so this is a great contract. Um, it's a five-year contract, year one's budget neutral.
I think that's awesome. Thanks, Chief. I know talking to a lot of, uh, the great officers, you know, a lot of feedback I heard was it takes forever to do paperwork, and there's a lot of inefficiencies with some of our processing. And so I'm, I'm happy to see this. I think FaceTime with the community is where it counts. So I'm happy to see this and ready to make a motion?
Any more comments?
Question. Chief, just to recap, then all of our officers that's on the road will have a dash cam and body cam, right?
Correct.
Now.
Once we, once we go ahead with this contract, all the officers that are working road patrol, the supervisors, will have a dash cam and a body cam.
Okay, now, the, the body cam, uh, what, uh, turns that on? The, the officer have to turn that on themselves?
The officer can turn it on, correct.
You say can turn it on? What?
You just press a button, it turns on.
Okay.
The cameras also turn on with the overhead lights, as well as a, uh, when you remove the taser from the holster, it activates the camera as well.
So is there a penalty for the officer not turning it on in a situation that he should have turned it on?
So in, in the policy, there's activation criteria. If the officer does not activate the criteria, discipline will ensue. And as much discipline is, it's progressive. It starts with a verbal and then goes to a written to suspension.
So I'm, what I'm hearing you say, I, I think, is that it's required.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Kelly?
Chief, thank you for, um, for this contract and for bringing this to us and, and discussing it. What, um, what is, is the maintenance included within this contract? Do we have backups if someone's camera has to go in for service? How, how would we handle, um, situations like that where a camera is not working, um, and with this contract?
So it includes all maintenance. It's a five-year warranty. That includes all the storage. And as you know, digital evidence, especially if you're running the camera on every call for service, you're gonna get a lot of data. Um, so evidence.com, it's cloud-based, it's, uh, unlimited storage, which is really important. And every officer gets two cameras. So if one is defective, they lose it, battery's dead, they'll have a second camera.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are we good?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we're gonna move on to item, thank you, item seven D as in David. Commissioner Hay?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to, uh, just to explain the advantages and, and, and the reason behind, the rationale behind, uh, while we're doing this, you know, the, the West versus the East and the reason for this. I, I'd just like the public to, to hear it. I read the, the, the background, you know, material. But I just wanted the public to, to hear, uh, why we're doing this and what's the rationale for doing that. But I just wanted the public to hear why we're doing this and what's the rationale for doing that.
Poonam Kalaket, I'm the Director of Utilities. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Legal Counsel and City Manager, Assistant City Manager. Basically, we're not, it's not required right now. We are going over and beyond to do four log removal for, for basic, for groundwater. So, it's required for surface water plants, but not for groundwater plants. Our West Plant already has membranes and that can take care of those. So, now, we are going into the East Plant and making some changes so that we can get four log removal. And four log removal just means ninety-nine point nine nine percent removal of any viruses. So, right now, all we meet, the plan meets all the requirements for drinking water, disinfection. But this, this project is going to make it even better to get that removal.
So, both plants now would be at the ninety-nine point nine percent.
Correct.
Purient.
Disinfection, yes.
Disinfection.
Removal of any viruses or anything like that.
So, we can put a labor on our boughs and sell the water, right?
We can. That's what we want.
Very good. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Just, so, this will prevent the city from having any sort of potential? Because I know we had an issue not too long ago, and I don't want to rehash it necessarily, but where one of our tests came back not where we wanted it to be. Is this something that will prevent that from happening again?
So, I'm not sure which incident we are talking about, but viruses are usually not found in groundwater. So, that's why it's not a required removal of disinfection. But to go over and beyond, and as we are coming into more influences of surface water onto groundwater, it's something that EPA is encouraging water plants to do. So, this will do that, but we are also doing a number of other projects within this and studying some of the things that we want to study to make sure that we are meeting all the requirements. So, in that sense, we should be meeting. I'm not aware, so that's why I'm not sure which incident you're talking about. But we have been meeting all the requirements for drinking water purposes for disinfection, but this will go over and beyond.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Turkin?
I just want to say thank you, Poonam, for everything you do. I know a couple of people that work in your organization and they speak very highly of the culture there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
To approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to public hearing. This, this is a second reading and we're going to move on to item eight A. Proposed ordinance number twenty-two dash zero one eight, second reading. Counsel, please read the ordinance into the record.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter One, Article Two, use definitions, Chapter Three, zoning, and Chapter Four, Article Three, exterior buildings and site standards, CDRB twenty-two dash zero zero five, to include requirements for commercial frontage provided for complex severability codification and effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Attorney. And do we have any comments from staff?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Amanda Radigan, the Planning and Zoning Director for the city. There have been no changes between first reading and second reading. Should you, like, I could review the presentation that was given at the last meeting.
For my colleagues, do you guys want to review the presentation again? Nothing has changed and it's already been read into the record.
Nope.
I feel confident.
Forward?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Amanda, so much. All right, with that being said, I'm going to move on to public comment.
Susan Oyer, AKA the bane of Amanda's existence here for years now. I think this, I sat in the P and D meeting when this came up. There were exceptionally poor visuals. I don't like how this was thrown together. I think it, I think the idea behind it might be great, but I think it really needs some people who actually know the city of Boynton Beach and have some concrete examples to sit down and look at this. And this is where it would be a great time to have a Citizens Advisory Board on architecture because this is your perfect scenario to work through and solve some of this because what they see as planners who live outside of our city and just know what they see on their comings and goings within our city isn't what the residents actually see. And I think, you know, for example, I asked, for example, because I'm like, explain this to me. I'm like, I sat on P and D for years. I have a good understanding of this and this is like over my head. And the best example they could come up with is, oh, Hurricane Alley, it's a hundred percent. Like, no, it's not. My family's owned that building for generations. No, you actually have offices. It's not a hundred percent. They couldn't even come up with an example, a concrete example to describe each of these scenarios. I really think you all should, you know, I know you're going to do what you're going to do, but realistically, I would stop it. I would table it and I would say, you need to come up with, I want to see pictures and I want to see percentages and I want you to go to multiple places around town and show us in each district. Give us examples of what the heck it is you're talking about. And put them up here for everybody to see so everyone understands this. Because if I'm confused, imagine somebody trying to open a business in this city and trying to figure out what the heck this means. So, that's just my input. Thank you.
Any other comments in person? All right, Manny, we're going to move on to virtual comments. How many hands raised do we have right now?
There are no hands raised at this moment.
Perfect. All right, do we have any other comments from my colleagues?
Nope, I feel confident. You know, I have all the details, percentages and everything here. So, I'd like a motion to approve.
Any other comments from anyone else?
No, we had that discussion last time meeting and I'm comfortable, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. One comment I wanted to make is that, you know, this is an ordinance that was created with the purpose of making sure that mixed-use developments, they ask mixed-use developments, that we don't have a development coming in which is supposed to be for mixed use and it really has, let's say, hundreds of residential properties, but only maybe one retail space. You know, I believe that that was not enough and that's why I wanted to make sure we brought this up to this commission. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting this initiative. And now, we're going to go ahead and vote. We have a motion, we have a second. City Clerk, can you do a roll call? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to item eight A. Proposed ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two two, second reading. City Attorney, can you please read the title into the record?
Sure. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter Two, Land Development Process, Article Two, Planning and Zoning Division Services, Section One F, to allow for an expiration of abandoned applications and Section Seven G, to establish a process for zoning interpretations. And Chapter Three, zoning, Article Two, General Provisions, Section Eleven, to create an exemption for city-owned telecommunications towers used for essential services. And Article Three, zoning districts and overlay zoning, excuse me, overlay zones, Section Two B, revising the parameters for permitted administrative adjustments. Article Four, Use Regulations, Section D, footnote twenty-three, to revise the regulations for industrial uses on arterial and collector roadways. Chapter Four, Site Development Standards, Article Five, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements, Section Three G, to include a sustainable parking ratio for select industrial uses provided for complex severability codification and an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. Now, we're going to move on to staff comments. Amanda?
Good evening again, Amanda Radigan, Planning and Zoning Director. Like the previous code amendment, there have not been any changes between first and second reading and I am here to review the presentation, should you please.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other comments from my colleagues? Nope. Since we don't, we're going to go ahead and move to public comment. If anybody wants to make public comment regarding this specific agenda, item eight B, you are free to do so right now.
Susan Oyer, Amanda Radigan's, you know, bane of existence. As usual, I'm going to object to everything because I just think all of this is being done incorrectly and without enough citizen input. So, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Any more in-person comments? If not, Manny, we're going to go ahead and move to public comment. How many hands do we have raised?
No hands raised at this moment.
Thank you very much. All right, now, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, City Clerk, can we do a roll call? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin? Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you, City Clerk. For City Manager's report, we have none. We already went through ten, so now, we're going to go over to eleven new business. We have none. And then, legal, twelve A, we have proposed ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two five, first reading. Attorney, you want to take it?
Yes, ma'am, I'll read the title. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving an amendment to the Boynton Beach Administrative Building Code by creating Section one-ten-point-eleven-point-one-dash-one-ten-point-eleven-point-sixteen of the Seventh Edition, two thousand and twenty of the Florida Building Code to create, implement, and enforce a building milestone inspection program provided for complex severability codification and an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. Now, I do understand we have a presentation from staff. Do we want to see that presentation?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. Adam Temple, Development Services, and joined behind me. Soon to be next to me is our Chief Building Official, John Koontzman, who probably has the most difficult job in the city. So, I'm here to introduce him to you all as well. Based on Florida Statute five-five-three, the state legislature has enabled local jurisdictions certain, subject to certain limitations to a job, to adopt amendments to the administrative provisions of the Florida Building Code. As such, this evening, we are here to introduce an amendment to our locally adopted administrative provisions of our building code as a, as a response to the Surfside tragedy that occurred about a year, year and a half ago. If we can skip to the next, next slide, please. All right, so, the purpose of this program and amendment that we're introducing tonight is to maintain the structural integrity of buildings throughout the service life and ensure that buildings are structurally and electrically sound so not to pose a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare to the community. This building recertification, also interchangeably building milestone inspection program is, is being introduced this evening. And if we can go into the next slide, we'll go into what's being, what structures are impacted, right? So, this is a, a table, Senate Bill four D. It's the law of the state of Florida, was signed later this summer, a special legislative session, enacted a statewide building milestone inspection program. That program on the, on the left, the left table, is every, is the main requirements of an eighty-eight-page document that was filed in Tallahassee. Then, in a nutshell, that slide on, on the left-hand slide sums it up. Structures impacted in that bill are condominium, condominiums. Right, condominiums, three stories or higher fall into this program. What's not, what didn't get passed in the state legislature were, were other buildings for people that may rent, hotels that are twenty stories, office buildings that are thirty stories, right? Those were not included in the Senate bill. So, I wanted to, we wanted to highlight what's included in the Senate bill, which is on your left, and what our staff is recommending as part of our own local amendment. So, statewide, you'll see in the next category, so it requires a twenty-five-year recertification period, a milestone inspection program for structures, condominiums, that are within three miles of the coast. Anything outside of three miles is a thirty-year milestone inspection. And then, every ten years after that is another, you continue on your recertification of a building every ten years after. What our staff is proposing and our building officials proposing is to include all buildings, all threshold buildings as defined in Florida statute. All threshold buildings are anything greater than three stories, okay? Regardless of occupancy type, right? Regardless of whether it's condominium-owned, rented, or people are staying the night there in a hotel. So, all structures greater than three stories would come into the program. And then, instead of having a bifurcated milestone inspection program of twenty-five and thirty years, staff's recommending a one, twenty-five years for the entire city. And, and I'll give you an illustration shortly to show you where those properties lie within the city. Tell you that in doing this analysis, we found that just in the same neighborhood, right? Use Hunter's Run as an example. You have buildings in there that would fall within the twenty-five-year program, the way the stat, the state has it. And buildings literally almost across the street would be thirty years. And so, we felt, we believe that it was, it makes sense for the purpose of running the program and just, just common sense that all those buildings should be within the twenty-five-year program. Next slide, please. So, this is a very small, very difficult-to-read map. But there should be a red line that is jogging across. Everything to the west, west of that would have been a thirty, a thirty-year structure. So, you see, there's just a couple of, a couple of dots in there. So, we're recommending again that all properties greater than three stories are at the twenty-five-year more stringent requirement. There's approximately, for those wondering, there, based on our proposal, there would, there's approximately two hundred structures in the city that would now be required to go through a building milestone inspection. Okay, predominantly, everything east of, east of US one is a large portion that would fall into the program. Next slide, please. What's not included in the program? Single-family, two-family, three-family townhomes with three or fewer habitable stories above ground. State and University Palm Beach County School Buildings and US Government and State of Florida Palm Beach County Buildings are not included in the program. Next slide, I think it might be it. So, we went ahead and included the recertification procedure for those members of the public that are, that are, that are curious and interested in this. In the next slide, we have a flow chart that shows it graphically. It's fairly, fairly short and sweet. It starts with a notification process by our building official for those structures that are twenty-five years or older. We have a priority schedule of structures that we would begin notifying fairly quickly. They would, then the property owners would be required to do a, an initial visual observation, visual inspection, phase one inspection is what it's called. They would submit, the engineer architect would submit that to our building, building department, who they would review. And if it's in compliance, are good to go, then they would, then they recertify every ten years afterwards. If not, if that phase one inspection requires additional investigation, then an engineer would do a little bit more digging, exploratory demolition, and things like that, come up with a recommendation of repairs and go from there. Slide? Yes, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Okay. All right, and that, that concludes the presentations. Again, what we're asking for is, we're requesting that we adopt Senate Bill four D and with our, with our recommendations of making it a little bit more stringent for twenty-five-year for citywide and all threshold buildings instead of just condominiums.
Thank you, Adam. Do I have any comments from my colleagues, starting with Commissioner Kelly?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. I think that it makes it very clear and, and easy for everyone to make it just uniform, twenty-five years. And I think that then there's no question as to where your building falls. Mike, so some of my questions are, first, so if this is enacted, how long do owners have to then have? have their buildings inspected and submit the reports to the city? If they fall, if they're older than the 25 years and they have to immediately have it inspected, what's the timeline?
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The initial notice will go out 365 days, be one year. We, that will be their first notification, and then they will have six months or 180 days to provide the very first phase-one inspection. If they provide that documentation to the, when they provide that documentation to us, we'll review it. If they recommend a phase-two, then they have another 30 days after that to get their engineer out there to perform the inspection. And as Adam said, that will be more in detail, some exploratory demo would be required, but not too invasive to endanger the building or the occupants.
Do you know how many buildings are in the city right now that are older than 25 years that qualify, that will need to immediately do these inspections?
A lot of buildings that were constructed in the 70s and the 80s. When I was doing this, I found that most of the buildings along federal highway were built in the 80s and earlier. There were some 90s, but most of them were in the 80s and the 70s. All the buildings, I believe there's eight buildings on the Barrier, Barrier Island, those were all done in the 70s, and the ones east of A1A were also in the 70s as well.
We have quite a bit of buildings that are gonna qualify for this.
Most of them.
And what's the impact on staff as far as reviewing these reports and making sure that that there's a plan in place for repairs and follow-up? I'm assuming that since we're now talking about almost all, or a large portion of, of buildings that are going to need to be inspected almost immediately, what is, what are we projecting as the impact on city staff for the, the work that has to be done to make sure that, you know, we're following through with, you know, what these inspection reports glean, I guess?
Yes. Initially, we're, we are going to have administrative staff sending out notifications via certified mail, email, and we will be hand-delivering the notifications. Okay, and then they will have a full year to provide the inspections, okay? On the impact on personnel, it's going to be administrative, okay? And then if work does need to be performed, then it will involve planner reviewers to do those, and in the documentation that's being proposed, we will be expediting those permit applications, okay? As soon as they bring them in, we will devote staff time to turn the permits around. So the work can be done, the buildings can be safe.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, and I, I guess my only kind of, kind of request out of this would be to just make sure that, you know, we're, if we're, if we're noticing any lapses or any issues with staffing or anything that, you know, the commission is kind of, would like an update on where we are maybe, once the process gets started, how, I guess how this is impacting city staff. I would just like to have a report back, and maybe that's something that you can do once we're, you know, a couple months into, to the program, to making sure that, you know, we're not missing anything, because what's the point of doing all this if it's not effective and efficient and, and we're missing something? So that's all I have, so.
And Commissioner Kelly, we, we will do, and for the benefit of everybody, our, our building department is a special revenue fund, so everything that we collect within the building department, including this, this new program, will do, do pay for all of the salaries and benefits, all the operations of our, of our building department, so if we do see that, that we do need additional personnel to do that, then we would, we would come through the City Commission requesting that, should, should we deem it necessary? But at this point, we don't believe, you know, that it'll have much of a, much of a, an impact, at least, at least initially, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Any other comments from my colleagues? Commissioner?
Well, questions, most of them were answered. So thank you for the dialogue. No, I, I like the, I think this is important, by the way. I think the state of Florida, the government of the state, legislation, state senate did a great job with this. You know, we've seen what happened with Surfside, and then there was another development that, I don't remember the name, but somewhere, I think, a little bit closer. You know, we hear about Harbor Hall inlet, right? So I think the more stringent approach is good. I think the multifaceted attack of communication is important, because I agree with Commissioner Kelly, you know, no one likes to be thrown a curveball or sideswiped, so I think like really doubling down on communication is important. I think, Adam, your comment on, you know, it, it is gonna be a revenue generator for the city, which I think is, is great. And so hopefully, that can contribute back, you know, to the fund. You know, so it's kind of a double-edged sword. It's safety and we're able to offset costs, so I'm all for it.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes, I have a few, I do agree with the 25-year citywide. I do agree with that. But I'm just wondering, you know, we have buildings on the east side of I-95 and on the west side, and we have these things called hurricanes. I think the buildings on the east side take quite a beating versus some of our buildings on the west side of I-95. So I guess the, the first question is, would there be a penalty for those who say, hey, I don't have the money to do this, I'm not doing it? What are we doing in a situation like that? Have that, you giving that some thought?
Yes, yes, sir. I've actually probably heard from the news reports, but Surfside had a 40-year recertification program. I have expertise in running that program down in Miami-Dade County for, for a number of years, so there are many resources that, that the city could take. Obviously, we, you have this special magistrate process, but our building official here has quite a bit of vested powers through the state of Florida and, and from, anywhere from evacuating buildings to, you know, leaning properties to demolition of, of unsafe structures. You know, all of those tools are in the toolbox, should, should, you know, people not wish to, wish to comply. What I'll add, though, that is, in the state bill, it did a lot of things. I mentioned that it was 88 pages, 89 pages of, of black and white print. Included in there, though, is, is a requirement for a structural reserve study, so a lot of emphasis on that bill was placed on homeowner's associations, because there's, there seemed to be a, a lack of will to do the necessary repairs on, on buildings. They change boards and so on and so forth, so what the legislation did do is put a lot of responsibility back on to the HO, the homeowners association boards of these buildings to ensure that the appropriate repairs are adequately funded, so that they can, they can be done, which is, which is very important.
Okay, thank you. Also, we have several projects that are coming out of the ground now, and some, well, just the ones that are in existence now. Are they gonna have to go back and, and do an additional modification based on the new requirements, or, or do we have new requirements? Are they just gonna meet the regular city code that exists now on the books? And that will meet your requirement under this proposal?
So I think I, I think I can take this one. The, anything that's being built right now are being built to our current edition of the Florida Building Code, so you know, the thought behind that is that they're building, they're being built and constructed to, you know, higher standards currently. Anything that was built previously were built under different building codes, statewide building codes. And they would not, this program would not require them to bring their buildings up to today's current building code and electrical code standards. It will just make sure that they are structurally and electrically sound. It wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to, to fix, to, to conform with today's building code standards, anything that was built, you know, 25, 30 years ago. But anything that's being new, built new right now would be built to today's current building code standards, and then their clock would start at 25 years, once they get their certificate of occupancy. That's when their clock would start ticking.
Okay. I'm just thinking in, in my mind, buildings on the east side of I-95 would require something more than the buildings on the west side of I-95, strictly for the, you know, if you look at the hurricane now, the nature is reclaiming what belongs to, to nature, and it won't happen, you and I won't be around, but eventually Florida, the, the word is, we'll go back to the water, okay? And we can see that each time there's a major hurricane of some kind, that the land is washed away, the sands are, and each one of those hotels are getting more and more damaged. I would think there would be more stringent requirement for those buildings versus, say, Holiday Inn over here, that's four stories on Congress and water that ocean. But you saying that they are going to be the same?
I think I misunderstood your, your original question. I'll let John answer the technical.
I asked him another question now.
Yeah, the technical.
You answered that question. Thank you.
Commissioner Hay, the, the, the biggest enemy of buildings on the ocean or on the Barrier Island is not hurricanes, it is salt intrusion. Okay, studies were done where the northeast of every building has the most salt damage. Once the salt gets into the concrete, it starts to soak in. You, you have a constant wind, you have constant saltwater hitting the buildings, and sooner or later, that, that salt is going to hit the steel. And once it hits the steel, that's when you, the steel starts to spall, and that's where you start having big problems, and the buildings that were constructed back in the 70s and back in the 80s were built with different codes, okay? Basically, everything is the same. I know my house was built in 59, and I've done work on it, I've replaced my roof, and it's pretty much built to today's codes, okay? So not a whole lot has changed when it comes to constructing. You know, your foundations are different, the different materials, different waterproofing materials, and those things extend the life of the buildings that are exposed to saltwater, okay? There are very few buildings on the ocean that are going to, or actually built in the 70s that are gonna meet today's NEC requirements. It's not gonna happen. A lot of the equipment that they use are outdated, and they are still available to be replaced, but one of the options that we are providing is to have infrared x-rays done. Instead of tearing apart the electrical system, they're allowed to use machinery to actually see where the hotspots are, and if something needs to be done, then they will be done. Okay, so there are, there are things that, that, that we're doing that allow them to be constructed at the codes that they were, they were built in, and that's what the whole idea behind the Senate bill is to not to bring everything up to date, it's just to make it safe and extend the life of the building.
Very good, John. Thank you, Adam. This is long overdue. Job well done.
Okay. I do want to thank you guys for being proactive and taking a step in the right direction. You know, within my district, I know this affects Hunter's Run, and I think it's gonna make the process more efficient. It's gonna help streamline it and make sure that the entirety of the, you know, country club is able to do their building inspections at the same time, instead of trying to figure out which five years are it within, so thank you guys for doing that, and obviously, we're following state law. Do we have any more comments from my colleagues?
I just wanna thank you, Adam, thank you, John, the whole building department for looking into this. You know, we don't want a Surfside in Boynton. I don't think we want buildings as high as Surfside in Boynton, so I'll end with that.
Anyone else? Now I'll entertain a motion.
The move.
Second.
Alright, city clerk, can we do a roll call, please? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we're gonna move on. Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to 12B, proposed resolution number R22-170. I understand our city attorney has an update for us.
Yes, this is the one that I asked for, or I mentioned there was a correction. The, the name of the project is actually Boynton Beach Boulevard Complete Streets Project. So although the original agenda said Boynton Beach Boulevard Extension Project, it's Complete Streets Project, and the resolution has been updated and revised. So when you proceed this evening, it will be under that revised title of the project. In all other manner, it's the same.
Thank you, city attorney. I'll go ahead and read the resolution for the record. Resolution number R22-170, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a first amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency to provide an additional $500,000 in funding for the construction of the Boynton Beach Boulevard Complete Streets Project, amending the adopted fiscal year 2223 budget for the 302 fund from 4.9 million to 5.3 million, and providing an effective date. Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Nope.
Commissioner?
No, you're fine.
No, go ahead.
No, I just want, I just had Mario, I just had, thank you for walking up. I just wanted, just to clarify for the public that it's my understanding that we're adding this additional funding due to potential over, potential costs, and it's not necessarily a definite that these funds will get extended. Is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor Commissioners, my esteemed colleagues, members of the public. Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works, you are correct. It's a contingent, allowing the CRA to fund the CIP 302 account. We just anticipate costs coming in higher for construction. Like I always say, we put an asterisk next to it. We'll know ultimately when the bids come back, but it's just formality doing it now, as opposed to awarding the bid. It comes higher, then coming back to you guys after the fact.
I guess, is it a formality, or is it a requirement that we have to have this funding in place as? Is it's, I guess it's my understanding that we had a set amount, and then the reason that that is changing is because of potential costs, so is this something that we're just doing as a safety net, or is this something that's really required because we need to budget for a certain amount of overage?
I might use the word incorrectly, formality. It is a contingency fund. Back in 2020 June, resolution R20045 was approved, and it stipulated $1 million in construction. We anticipate that being higher. So it's a contingency for the CRA to fund CIP.
Great, thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner Turkin?
Nope, I'm just looking forward to seeing this. I know this has been a long, long time coming.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, in that case, I have a motion to, I need, oh wait, oh wait, I apologize, you're right, 12C.
Just real quick, I'm, I'm mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission pursuant to section 2860118 Florida statutes, an attorney-client closed-door session is requested to discuss the case of City Boynton Beach versus JKM BTS Capital, Palm Beach County Superior Court, case number 50-2020CA012780XXXMB. Those in attendance are expected to be the mayor, members of the City Commission, City Manager Dan Duggar, City Special- city special litigation counsel Tom Baird and Joanne O'Connor, myself and a court reporter. We're going to be coordinated in a date and time for that. As you know, state statutes, I have to request it at a meeting and then if it's necessary, we will schedule it. We believe we will need to have a follow-up meeting with the city commission on that item.
Thank you, city attorney.
Vice Mayor, I, I guess my only, I don't have a question about that, that's fine. But what is the status of the closed-door session or rescheduling the closed-door session on the E two L?
We're going to get on that tomorrow to reschedule that.
Do we need to do anything?
No, I've requested that before and so we're just, we haven't had that meeting yet.
Great. Do I have any other comments?
Nope, good job chairing the meeting, Vice Mayor.
Good job.
You're great.
You've done good, kid.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion, meeting has been adjourned. Thank you.